I would like to leave at this time with Commander Daniel Rush and Lieutenant Commander Irving Carrillo. Understand?
Sorry, sorry. Get the good.
Present arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms, out.
Well, this time I call the April 27th meeting of the Board of Education Order. Pastor here for the implication, let's see, to Matt, Dr. Mudd, Mr. Mudd.
Thank you, Mrs. Javers. Let's pray. We want to thank for loving us and blessing us, Lord, and we'll reach out to you tonight, Lord, and ask to guide this meeting. I am so thankful for these board members who have sacrificially served our young people of our community and our schools, Lord, and I just pray over their efforts tonight and their decisions tonight. Lord, I just thank you for your protection you provided over our schools, over our buses each and every day, our teachers and students, Lord, and I just thank you in advance for each and everything that you'll do for us throughout the rest of this year, and I pray that the things that we do and say tonight in this room are pleasing in your sight. In your name I pray, amen.
All right, you need a motion to adopt the agenda?
Move we adopt the, the agenda as presented?
Mr. Preston, if Wade, or the others. Please.
All right, thank you, sir. Like to welcome everybody here tonight. We've got a big crowd, and we're here to celebrate some students and their achievements, so we're real excited to have everybody here and look forward to carrying on the business of the school system. The first thing we want to do is talk about our mission as a school system, Destination Graduation for College Career and Life. And we've got graduation coming up on May 27th, and we'll be graduating around 387 students, and if you add in our students who are at the Career Academy, that'll put us over 400, around 415 students will be graduated. So we're really excited about graduation coming up and looking forward to celebrating the end of the year, and it's great to see a big crowd here. So, at this time also, we have our vision of creating a stronger community through an equitable and excellent education for every student, and I think we need to think about our why, why we're here. We're here for the children of Coffee County and the young people and to provide the best education we can possibly provide, so that's the purpose of the school system. So, welcome, and we'll carry on with our meeting. Governance and Leadership, we have Special Recognitions, Georgia Young Author Writing Competition.
It's my pleasure tonight to recognize the Young Authors Writing Competition Award winners. This, the purpose of the Georgia Young Authors Writing Competition is to encourage students to develop an enthusiasm for and an expertise in their writing. The competition is sponsored by the Georgia Language Arts Supervisor and the Georgia RISA Network, and it also has support from the Georgia DOE. So, I'm going to recognize on the screen here tonight our local winners. Let me tell you a little bit before I tell you the titles and the winners. Each school is given an opportunity to submit a winner by grade level. So, for these students to be recognized tonight, it means that not only was their work chosen as the top writing piece for their grade level at the school, but then all of those writing pieces are submitted here, and their writing stood out across the district. So, this is quite an accomplishment for your writing, to go to the RISA level to, you know, to represent the Coffee County school system for your grade level. So, this is a huge deal, and we're so proud of these students, and as Dr. Lee said, these students are a reflection of why, why we do it every day and the hard work that our teachers and students do together. Representing Rockston Mary Hayes Kindergarten is Olivia Kirkland, and the title of her story was "Popping Bubbles." We're gonna jump straight from kindergarten to fourth grade, and we'll read, we'll come back and visit first, second, and third in just a second. Our fourth grade winner from West Side Elementary was Asher Murray with "Snowball." Fifth grade is Avery Levens from West Green Elementary with "Mysterious Monday." Our sixth grade winner from Coffee Middle School was Janelle Diaz, and the title of her story was "I Fell Again." Zenadi Wright from Coffee Middle School, seventh grade, the name of her story was "The Unknown Coffee Middle School, eighth grade, Monica Castro Nieto with the story titled "The Game." Harrison Andrew Bagwell with the story title "From the Clutches of the Beast," representing George Washington Carver freshman campus. Our tenth grade winner was William Hutchison with "The Fall of War," representing Coffee Nathan Cooper represents our eleventh grade student group at Coffee High, "To Be a Snowman" is the title of his story. Adrienne Castro is our twelfth grade representative from Coffee High with "My Abalita's Garden." Now, I'm gonna ask Mr. Evans to take us back to our first grade winner. So what happens, we submit all of our Coffee County winners to RISA, and then all of the RISA districts send their grade level winners to RISA. So we all send 12, every school in your system has an opportunity to send a writing sample, and we send those, and these, we had three winners at the RISA district, and their writing was chosen across all RESSAs for their grade levels, so this is an awesome, awesome accomplishment. So I have three students here tonight who did a fabulous job representing the Coffee County school system. First of all, for first grade, Presley Steed, the title of her story is "The Story of Avery and Lily." Come on up, Presley. Representing Ambrose Elementary in the Coffee County school system, our second grade RISA level winner is Banks Foster, and the title of his story is "Trapped in Trouble." We're so proud to have a third winner this year from Indian Creek Elementary, third grade, Mary Elizabeth Ursery, with her story titled "The Home of Basin." Again, the work of these students to be selected at the RISA level goes far and above what many are able to accomplish. We've had one or two winners before, but three tops it, so let's give these boys and girls another round of applause. Thank you so much.
Dr. Tucker.
I would love to.
Dr. Tucker, how many counties are in our RISA district?
None.
Nine?
None. Awesome. Awesome, so, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker, thank you. Parents, thank y'all for what you do, and great job.
All right, next item on our agenda is our strategic planning update. We have been busy having community meetings and planning as a district, and Ms. Allison Spade, our Director of Assessment Accountability and Strategic Planning, is gonna present our draft of strategic planning thus far, so Ms. Spade, the floor is yours.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone, and as Dr. Lee mentioned, we are closing out our current strategic plan of FY 19 to FY 23, we're closing out that school year, so we are working hard, as he mentioned, to launch our new plan, so we just wanna give you an update. The last time that we talked about it was at our board retreat, and so I just wanna give you an update since we met the last time. We do plan to continue with our mission and vision, Destination Graduation for College Career and Life, and creating a stronger community through equitable and excellent education for every student. Now, as we go through these, we'll talk about the different goal areas. Our action teams got together and worked in these areas, some made a few revisions as they worked through and saw the needs to change different things, and so we'll review those things tonight, and we'll, you know, we'll take your input if you have some input on tonight, but we'll continue to work on that next week to finalize our plans. So, Mr. Evans, thank you. Goal area one is student and academic success, and that was formerly in our old plan, teaching and learning, and our performance objective one in that area is to ensure a high-quality, engaging curriculum and instruction for all students, and we're gonna do that through implementing our new Georgia State standards and best practice and monitor for state-based, standards-based classrooms, and we're also gonna continue our focus on expanding literacy initiatives and early learning collaboratives. For objective two, we plan to implement a high-quality assessment system which includes all content areas. We'll do that by identifying and implementing a district assessment plan in all of our K-12 classrooms, by monitoring and adjusting instruction to differentiate for our individual students' needs, and by defining and developing a framework for our project-based learning in K-5. That was in our previous plan, and we'll continue to give attention to our project-based learning. Objective three in that goal area is to expand the academy and workforce development model. We'll continue to strengthen our and provide our career awareness across our county. We do some great things at our high school level, but we also wanna make sure that our K-8 areas are included in that as well. We'll also do that by working collaboratively with post-secondary institutions and the community workforce for the benefit of our academy students. Goal area two is communication and stakeholder engagement, that was formerly our family and Performance objective one is to refine and sustain effective communication processes with all of our stakeholders. By doing that, we're gonna make sure that we have good usage communication methods at the teacher's school and district level, and develop a consistent communication structure for our business and industry partners. Continue to strengthen our plans and process for effective engagement with families, and we'll do that by aligning effective family engagement opportunities in all of our schools, and by working with business partners and industries to enable our increased parent attendance at parent-teacher conferences. That was a big focus in our previous plan, and we're gonna bring that back to the attention of our business partners and industries, the need to work as partners to ensure that our parents are able to attend parent-teacher conferences. Our third performance objective in this area is to expand and sustain meaningful relationships with community partners, and we'll do that by expanding our community-industry partnerships with elementary schools. Again, that focus has been really strong at our secondary level, and we like that same attention and support from our community partners at our elementary level and middle school level as well. And we'll continue to enhance our K-5 community events, focus on the shared vision of creating a college and career-ready, college and career-ready graduates. Focus area three is high-quality workforce, and that was formerly our workforce and life. Performance objective one is to retain highly effective people in all positions. We all know the hardship of finding good folks and keeping good folks, so that is one of our goals. We'll try to retain our teachers, develop our leaders, and support our classified staff. We'll also evaluate our staff and provide relevant professional learning, giving them the support that they need in any way they need it by strengthening our staff, observational practices, and prioritizing professional learning and forming communities. The third thing that we'll do in that area is to recruit and hire high-quality people in all positions, and we want to take innovative measures to, for staffing, and we're gonna continue our focus on recruiting minorities. Goal area four is organizational effectiveness. This was our fiscal responsibility, it kinda spanned across all of our goal areas, it now has its own category, so that we can bring even more attention to that area. We do that by ensuring and sustaining processes for effective and efficient operations across all of our departments. We've implemented a new YAS platform that houses a lot of our different software, and Ms. John or Ms. Bradford has more information about that, she could probably tell us a little bit better, but it's just one central location for all of our various needs that our staff may have. And we'll create and implement departmental review processes to ensure that we are efficient and effective. Objective two is to ensure and sustain effective and efficient financial practices, to ensure financial and fiscal responsibility. So we'll continue to maintain our fiscally sound organization and meet our generally accepted governmental accounting standards. Our third objective is to ensure and maintain safe facilities and healthy environments for all of our students and staff, and we'll do, we'll do that by reviewing and maintaining strong safety plans, and by reviewing and maintaining good facility plans to make sure that everything's staying current. And our final goal area is culture and climate, that was formerly people and culture. Our first objective in that area is to create a safe, welcoming, inclusive, and equitable school climate that promotes learning. We'll continue to do that by strengthening our school and district safety planning and environment security, and we'll also build a welcoming and inclusive learning environment. Objective two is to foster the social and emotional well-being of our staff and of our students, and we'll do that by maintaining and strengthening our student support systems to enhance the development of the whole child by fostering and supporting the physical, social, and emotional well-being of our staff, and by creating a sense of belonging through a focus on citizenship and patriotism. Our third area is to create a culture of high expectations that celebrates successes throughout the district. We'll continue to provide leadership opportunities for all of our staff and recognition of outstanding employees, and we'll enhance our current student recognition programs. We have received our feedback in all of these areas from our GLC representative, we have a meeting scheduled for Monday with our district leadership folks to go through every facet of our plan to make sure that everything's finalized, and we have reflected on some of the strong things from our previous plan that need to be carried over, we've making sure that we're gonna have all of those things included, and then we'll come to some final decisions on what we want to move forward in, in our new plan. So again, that's our district meeting, and then after that, we will have a planning team meeting to reconvene with all of our folks who were involved in putting the new plan together, and then hopefully at our May 11th meeting with the board, we'll be able to bring it forward for use or approval, and then we can roll into our FY 24 preparation for implementation. Thank you, Dr. Lee. Anybody have any questions?
So, a lot of good work.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the parts you played in it.
Thank you, and I will tell the board that the Georgia School Board Association has asked that we present at the December meeting on strategic planning, isn't that correct, Ms. Spade?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
At this time, we have our consent agenda.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, sir. And on the consent agenda, we have the items that we discussed at our word session, monthly financial report, and then we have the Satilla Regional Library Board of Trustees, the maintenance countywide surplus property, the technology surplus property, the real estate and surplus property, we'll be selling the old board office to First Baptist Church, and then we will be acquiring, number seven, three acres, approximately three acres of land out beside West Green Elementary School to build a new West Green Elementary School, so we're really excited about that. So, a couple of big real estate transactions tonight that we're really excited about, so...
Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I saw a move.
Ms. Johnson?
Sure.
Wade, any comments?
All approved.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Javers. The board asked that I update the board on an ongoing issue that we have addressed, and I'm going to update the board on the softball situation with the Booster Club and the coach. And so, an inquiry was first made to me, first by email, and then in a public board meeting last year, questioning the finances of the Coffee High School Girl Softball Team Booster Club. The person questioning the finances also filed a complaint with the Douglas Police Department. As a result of such inquiry, the school system began an investigation of the Booster Club, and as part of the process, the Booster Club funds were transferred to the Coffee High Activity Account. Following the formation of a formal organization for the Booster Club and the opening of a checking account with a local bank, all of the funds were returned by the high school to the Booster Club for deposit into the newly opened checking account. There has been some discussion and questions coming to this office and on social media about the softball coach having been terminated by me as a school employee. For the sake of clarity, I want to state that to date, there has been no vote to terminate or dismiss any employee of the school system in connection with this matter. Rather, last month, I informed the board that I would not be recommending that the current head softball coach remain as such for the coming school year. Under Georgia school law, without a recommendation by me on the position, there has been nothing for the board to vote on concerning who would be coach. Following this, we began advertising for this position. Upon the Booster Club learning that I was not recommending the current softball coach back as coach for the next year, and despite it just having gotten the Booster Club formally organized, the Booster Club closed its newly opened bank account and transferred the funds back to the high school activity account. I want the board to know that since this matter was brought to the attention of the school system, my staff and I have refrained from any public comment, and at my direction and insistence have remained above the fray, both publicly and privately, as the school system allowed the investigative process to run its course. But in the process, as some of the public is aware, the school system has been the recipient of shocks from both sides of an ongoing dispute involving the Booster Club. On the one hand, an individual who has made public allegations and accusations about the club's finances has also accused the school system of trying to sweep the matter under the rug and not handle it in a professional manner. On the other side of this dispute, another individual is blaming the school system because her family has been accused of stealing money from the Booster Club. Despite such volleys directed at me and the school system, the school system both publicly and privately has and will remain above the fray and not get involved in this ongoing dispute. Following the receipt of the investigation by the Douglas Police Department, which I note did not find any information or documentation to justify the issuance of criminal warrants, the school system requested a review of the matter by an outside accounting firm, as is our practice when there are allegations of financial impropriety. As part of this review process, and as is completely routine in such matters, the coach and others were requested to assist in the substantiation of the accuracy of the Booster Club books that had been turned over to the school system, including submitting receipts and invoices regarding expenses and payments. The review of the outside firm was inconclusive. While the review was inconclusive, the outside firm and the school system were frustrated by a laid-back approach in respecting the need to cooperate, difficulty in getting requested information, sloppy bookkeeping, and a failure to respect imposed deadlines with regard to furnishing information. With the above said, the school system considers the matter closed. Unless additional information is presented to me, the school system has not, and will not be making any finding involving any school employee or otherwise about the Booster Club and its finances. But the Booster Club is one matter. My making annual recommendations to the board about who I think should hold coaching positions is a separate matter. Not only is it a separate matter, but it is something that my job as superintendent requires that I do every year as I evaluate and determine who I think should lead our athletic programs for the next school year. This year, I've opted to move in a new direction and make a change in the position of head coach of the Lady Trojan softball team. And that concludes my statement to the board, and at this time, we'll move forward with public participation.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Will we have some public participation?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. All right, Ms. Graham, we're recording, we have five minutes.
We are here tonight to address the issue of recent dismissal of our beloved softball coach. As members of this school community, we strongly believe that the decision to terminate our coach's contract was unjust and detrimental to our students, community, and our softball program. Our coach has been a vital part of our softball program for many years. He stepped up six years ago when no one else wanted the job. He has dedicated countless hours to developing the skills and abilities of our players, both on and off the field. He spent many man-hours of his personal time to get a large donation from a well-known corporation that made it possible to greatly improve our softball facility. He did this on his own without any help from the board or the superintendent, and if you saw our facility six years ago, you know it needed some improvement. His commitment to our team and our school is unwavering, and his passion for the sport, our players and our community, has inspired many of our players to pursue their dreams of playing ball at a higher level. His record should not only speak for itself, but be acknowledged by all. He is at a 67% in region wins, only second to boys' basketball, which is at 68%. All other sports fall way below, so our question is if we are going in a different direction with all school sports, why are all the other head coaches not getting their contracts renewed? The decision to terminate our coach's contract was made without any, any consideration of the players, their families, and apparently the board. Although it is the superintendent's right not to renew a contract, the board could have intervened. There were many phone calls made in support of the softball coach that fell on deaf ears. The response was there, is nothing we can do. Our understanding of having a board is to govern the superintendent and do what they feel is in the best interest of our students and their constituents. In this case, none of that was done. So the next question I have is why do we even need a board if one person can make all the decisions that affect so many? Everyone in this county should be concerned about that. Our team has been left without a leader, and tryouts are looming. Most of our players are discouraged and heavily considering not even trying out or relocating to another school because they are so hurt by this decision. So I ask you all, how is this advancing our softball program? This decision not only affects our team, but it also jeopardizes the future of our softball program. Without a qualified and experienced coach, we risk losing talented players and opportunities to compete at a higher level. We were an informal booster club who raised our own money and paid our own way until we were forced to turn over our money. No other booster club in this system has been audited or put through what these players went through during region play. We feel as though our female athletes are being targeted. Why? Because of complaints made by two families who no longer have students in our system, and actually, they've been gone since September the 8th of 2022. Therefore, I urge you to reconsider this decision and reinstate our coach immediately. We ask that you provide a fair and transparent review of this situation and consider the overwhelming support of our community for this coach. We believe that he has made a positive impact on the lives of our student athletes and has helped foster the love of the sport that will last a lifetime. In closing, I want to emphasize that our softball coach is an asset to our school and our community, and that his dismissal has called unnecessary hardship and... our community, and that his dismissal has caused unnecessary hardship and confusion. By reinstating our coach, you will not only restore the morale and spirit of our team, but also restore our trust in our superintendent and board members who work for us and should consider our position. It feels as if the softball booster club and the coach have been targeted in a personal bandada, and it is very disturbing to this community that a school employee can be dismissed on the sole decision of one person who has given no reason for the dismissal. Please help us to ensure that our softball program continues to thrive for years to come. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
I appreciate your call. It's been great. Personnel recommendations?
I have presented the personnel as presented.
Need a motion to approve the personnel recommendations?
I move we accept the personnel recommendations as presented.
Mr. Preston, Mr. Wade, all favorits? All? Okay. Meeting's adjourned.